Okay, I have 6:01, so I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Hingham on March 1st, 2022. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording the meeting this evening? I see no one. I will note for the record that Liz Klein and Bill Ramsey and myself, Joe Fisher, are members of the Select Board participating in this evening's meeting. First item on our agenda is to consider approval of the minutes of February 17th, 2022. I'm prepared to proceed, Bill.
I'm ready to proceed.
Liz.
Yes, I'm ready to.
Then I'll accept the motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the minute dated February 17th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And Joe.
Aye.
Approved. Next item on our agenda is to consider amending the vote regarding the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to John Davenport on behalf of the Friends of Hingham Cemetery, Inc., for the 2022 Winter Arts Series to be held at Ames Chapel by changing the date of January 8th, 2022 event to April 23rd, 2022 at 7:30 PM. And is John on the line?
I don't believe they're joining tonight.
I don't see him there. So either Michelle or Tom, if you could just explain why we have a new date?
Sure, the date was changed. They postponed one of the events due to the COVID surge earlier this year, so he was hoping to reschedule it to April 23rd.
And do we know if the Police Department has reviewed the proposed change of date, if they have any issues?
Yes, the chief reviewed, no issues.
Great. Bill, any questions?
No, I, you know, I got an email about it. I know that they canceled it because of the Omicron surge, so. No, I, no additional questions. I'm supporting, I'm supportive of the event.
Liz.
No questions.
Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm ready for a vote on this one.
I will make a motion to amend the vote regarding the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to John Davenport on behalf of the Friends of Hingham Cemetery, Inc., for the 2022 Winter Arts Series to be held at Ames Chapel by changing the date of the January 8th, 2022 event to April 23rd, 2022 at 7:30 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Approved, and I assume, so, excuse me, someone will let John know. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Vision Government Solutions, Inc., to conduct the fiscal year 23 Real Property Reassessment Program for the Town of Hingham. And I believe I've seen, I see Erin Walsh, Kathy Riley, and I think I see Josh Ross here as well. So I will start with Erin, if you could explain what is before us. And you are muted.
Sorry about that. So this is our recertification year with the Department of Revenue, so this is a contract with Vision Government Solutions to basically get us through our reval year in which our values will be certified. So this happens every five years, and this is the fifth year that this is occurring, and this is the contract that we have reviewed and voted on.
And during what period of time will the work take place?
The work will take place starting in the next month or so, and then we'll continue on until it should end by, I believe, the end of September.
And will there be a reassessment of all residential properties and all commercial properties?
So every year, we, based on sales, we reassess all properties. This is a revale, which is five years in which the state certifies the values, so they have sort of an intensive look at the entire town. It's, I would say, we we look at all of our sales every single year, so every year, everything is looked at. It's just this year, it's our recertification year.
So I'm not sure I understood. So will every property have their value either recertified or revalued? Where I'm going is that in past years, the Select Board has gotten comments from residents saying, well, my property was revalued, but my neighbors wasn't, and I'm being, you know, looks like I'm going to be paying more, so I just want to know if this is going to be uniform for all residences.
So I guess everything will be looked at, yes, and it's not a uniform, there's no percentage, so based on the sales, and it could be that certain areas are going to go up based on sales, and certain areas may go down based on sales. It's really a sales market-driven system. So if there are no sales in certain areas, you may not see a big change.
Okay.
That answered your question. In terms of the, the contract itself, we have requested that they do, that Vision does a field review of 50% of our residential, so the DOR used to require that we do 100% field review, so Vision would come in and look at the entire town, and it's not that they're measuring each individual house. They're sort of driving by, making sure that the neighborhoods are correct, they'll look at the field cards, make sure that our data is accurate. So last revale, we did 50% of the town, and then this year, we decided to do the 50% as well, but we're going to do 100% review of the commercial industrial properties.
Right, and I apologize, Chrissy, I should have given you a chance to call your, your board to order?
Yeah, no worries. I was able to jump on at the last minute, I didn't think I would, so just calling the Board of Assessors to order, and I'm pretty sure I see myself, Chrissy Roberts, Josh Ross, and Al Chambers, all three of us are on. Thank you. I'll need to adjourn us too, as soon as we're done.
Great.
Thanks.
So I'm, I'm sorry, Erin, I didn't mean to cut you off if you were, okay.
That's okay, I was done.
Great. Liz, any questions?
So I know, Erin, you explained this process to me before, so I, I'm familiar with that. And this, just remind me, Vision Government Solutions is a firm that we've worked with before in the past, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. And I saw that the, the fees were split between FY '22 and FY '23 for the total of the $72,000, is that right?
No, but the work will, because it's starting actually in this fiscal year, we have extra in our budget to fund what needs to be done this before the fiscal year, and then the rest will be done after July 1st.
Okay, okay, and completed by September.
Correct.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
But just, just if I can follow up on Liz's question, so I, I thought the contract did do a split of the, of the payments between the two fiscal years. That's my understanding.
It did not. It, I think the contract read that we would, the, the work that's done in this fiscal year will come out of this fiscal year's budget, and I have, I believe, $31,000.
Right.
And then the remainder would go in the next year, so I'm going to be using fiscal '22
Right.
funds to do the work that they're doing this fiscal year, and the rest will be for next fiscal year.
So I think you are agreeing that it's being split over two different fiscal years.
Well, the.
Joe, this is John. That, that is the way the contract is drafted, the most recent version, so we are, we are paying X amount in fiscal year '22, and then we are paying the balance in fiscal '23, and the current version of the contract reads that way.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Good answer. Bill Ramsey.
So Erin, when you said, when you said they're, they're doing 50% of the town, is that because they've already done the other 50%?
They did 50% last revale. They used to require we do 100%, but now they don't require anything. So they don't make a recommendation, they leave it up to us.
Okay, great, nothing further, thank you.
Chrissy, I will turn it over to your board for comments and questions.
Thank you. Yeah, not a ton to add. I just, I never want to miss an opportunity to applaud Erin and everybody in the office for doing such a great job. Was really impressed with the amount of detail, and we really, they really did check with lots of other peer towns on how they handle it in the 50% versus the 100%, and making, you know, good conclusions on what we're getting for our money and following up with, with anything we had asked, so I'm, we've worked with Vision for quite a few years. I'm confident they're the right company, and Erin and her team did a great job, and I don't, I could, you know, answer questions you have, but I think Erin did that, and I can turn it over to Josh and Al if they have anything to chime in on. Thank you.
Josh. You are in the dark, Josh.
Sure, thank you. And I was in the proposal from Vision, I was pretty impressed. I'm sorry, I'm sitting, I'm sitting in the car, waiting to go into the basketball, but you guys.
Gosh, we are struggling, at least I'm struggling to hear you.
So the
I, I would make a suggestion, Josh, if you've got comments, if you could text them to Chrissy, because we really can't, can't hear you.
Erin, Kevin, Erin, can you text him to just let him know that we can't?
Josh.
I'm doing that too.
Josh, I'm, I am going to mute you because it's, it's really not.
Which I thought was pretty impressive, they had about.
Oh, there we go.
Eight or 10 people who would come out and do it. The other thing I thought was an advantage was they have a, a new feature where they.
You're leaving us hanging about this new feature, Joe.
I'm trying to think of what the new feature is, so I could, I could complete the sentence for.
It's like a teaser. So is, I, I see Al Chambers is on, although I don't see him. Al, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Yes, I do, thank you, Joe. The, I, first of all, I was, this is the first time I've participated in a vote of this nature to have Vision come in. I wasn't in office five years ago. The, I was impressed completely by the quality of the demands made by the state to complete this review, and I was also totally impressed with the ability of our staff to respond to it as well as they did. I, I know that you all got the memo, actually the business memo, and, you know, writing business memos is a lost art, I think, and what you got from Erin and Jackie is just absolutely a superb review of what's going to happen. I also felt we got a good price on it, given the amount of detail demanded to complete the work. So I look forward to seeing this go underway, given the ups and downs of this incredible real estate market we're in, we're in. I'm sure we'll have complaints, but I'm sure also that you have the kind of staff that can address the needs this town will have in the coming fiscal years. Period.
Thank you, Al. Are there any members, I'm sorry, Chrissy, anyone else, anything, any other comments you or the board wants to make?
Uh, no, not for me.
Are there any members of the public with comments or questions concerning the agreement with Vision Government Solutions? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Vision Government Solutions Incorporated to conduct the FY '23 Real Property Reassessment Program for the Town of Hingham in an amount not to exceed $72,400.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe.
Aye.
Approved. Chrissy, thank you, and Erin, thank you for, for your work on this. There are many folks who sing your praises, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chrissy, did you want to adjourn?
Good night, everyone.
Don't leave yet, Al.
Ally there?
Don't leave.
There we go.
Oh, now you're really adjourned, whether you wanted to or not.
And I second, in favor.
Okay, you're adjourned.
Let the record show, I do it all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Good to see you.
See you later.
Okay. Next item on our agenda are two articles for the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Two Warren articles. I'm going to start with Article AAA, that's Article AAA, which is the to amend the zoning bylaw, gender neutral, and other term revisions. And I do see Emily Wentworth has graced us with her presence. Emily, if you could explain what Article AAA is about? We'd appreciate it, thank you.
Happy to. So the Planning Board proposed Article AAA in order to update certain terms in the zoning bylaw. Items 1 through 4 of the article would amend the zoning bylaw by replacing any gendered terms where they appear, excuse me, with gender-neutral versions in a manner similar to the general bylaws, which were updated by Annual Town Meeting in 2021. So examples of that, that you're very familiar with, where the term selectmen appears in the zoning bylaw, that would be replaced instead with select board, chairman with chair, et cetera. Item 5 is a little bit different. That would replace the term grandfathered, where it appears in Section 3G of the zoning bylaw, which is the downtown Hingham Overlay District, with the term pre-existing. State law protects uses or structures that predate a zoning regulation that rendered them non-conforming, and these uses or structures are commonly referred to as grandfathered. However, the Massachusetts Appeals Court noted in a 2020 case that the term grandfathered clause, clause, not clause, C-A-W, it's C-L-A-U-S-E, has racist origins. Some states adopted voting requirements post-Civil War in an effort to disenfranchise African-Americans while exempting those that had been eligible to vote prior to 1876. So for that reason, the Planning Board is recommending that we replace it with the defined term, pre-existing. So the Board opened a public hearing on the article on January 3rd, 2022, and voted at the conclusion of that hearing to recommend that Town Meeting adopt the amendment in the form that you received in advance of the meeting.
Thank you. Bill, any questions?
I have no questions. Thanks, Emily, for the, for the overview.
And Liz.
Yes, thank you, Emily, for the explanation. Just curious, was there any public comments at the, the, the forum that you had?
No, I just, I don't recall any, and I just reviewed the meeting minutes. It, it didn't seem to attract a lot of attention, probably in large part because Town Meeting just had this discussion last year with respect to the general bylaw.
Right, okay, no questions, thank you.
Just one question. I'm assuming that there were, there was, there were no dissents on the Planning Board on this?
I, no, it was a unanimous vote of the four of the five members that were present at.
Great. Great job. It's, it's a, it's a task that, it's not trivial, and you, you don't want to miss something because then when it comes back and there's someone who's appealing or looking at something, and they say, well, you didn't quite mean what, what was there, so I really appreciate your effort in, in making this happen. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions on Warren Article AAA? I am seeing none, and this is not something that the Select Board would vote upon, since this is a Warren article being put forth by the Planning Board. So that would conclude our discussion on AAA. Moving now. Emily? No, she's going to leave us. Okay. Moving now to Article, I just didn't, always, always good to see you, but.
Okay, thank you.
Just testing you.
Could I ask, could I ask one question for you? Go, Emily.
Sure.
So I was talking, I was reviewing some planning board here the other day. Am I correct that the zoning, zoning amendments only need 51% now, or is it just zoning amendments related to affordable housing?
Yeah, it's, so it's, it's not all zoning articles, it's, it's only those related to the housing choice legislation. So they're related to certain types of housing developments.
Okay, I didn't, I thought, there was, I had some confusion whether it was all or just certain ones, okay.
Just certain ones, and, and none that we have to deal with this year, but potentially next.
Great, thanks very much.
Sure, good, good night.
Good night, thank you. Next item is to consider Article GG, which is the Real Estate Transfer Fee. And I'm going to start with Tom, who's probably going to turn it over to Michelle. But at least let me start with Tom, if you can introduce this, and.
Absolutely, thank you, Joe. So, yep, so if you'll remember, the, and the public will remember, we started this conversation a couple of weeks ago. This is a new, a new attempted, a new attempt at a new revenue source, and this is something that was identified by Liz and Michelle's work with the other members of the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force, and this was a recommendation from them, so it's following up from that recommendation, not trying to be responsive to it. What it does is, in, in broad strokes, it, it would assign a 1% fee of the purchase price on all transfers of the real estate in town that have a first, what we would first, however, exempt 80%, an amount equal to 80% of the median assessed value of homes in town. So while it's an attempt at, at raising some revenue for the community, it is also, we are also very cognizant of the potential impact it could have on, on a portion of the community that we certainly don't want to adversely impact, new homeowners, low-income residents, and those that, that would come into town or want to come into town under those, under those auspices. So the idea here is to, is to exempt a, any of those, any of those amounts up to, you know, if, if we had applied these same concepts to the FY '23, which we're not, because it's not a law yet, but if it were, we would have exempted about $560,000, the first $560,000 for a real estate transfer, so that would exempt certainly all of affordable housing, which is capped at, Bill said the number last week, I would think it was 350, right, Bill?
I think it's 350, yes.
So all affordable housing properties would be exempted, and then certainly many lower-income homes would, would also be exempted, but equally important, the, that amount is exempted from all transfers. So if you bought a house for $600,000, and we exempted the first $560,000, the 1% fee would be applied to the balance, the difference of $40,000. So, so it's, it's hopefully a minimal, no, minimal to no impact on, on some of our more vulnerable residents. So that was certainly the intent and of the design, but Michelle, if there's anything that you wanted to add, you, you and your work on the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force, I don't want to, I don't want to not give you a chance.
Well, I think, what we had talked about the last time when we had presented this article was based off some data from the Assessing Office, we looked at the number of sales in town, and the way we've structured this proposal with the 1% fee and the exemption that Tom just described, being at about $560,000. If we were putting this in place in FY '23, the town could expect revenue around $2.2 million annually. And one of the things in the versions before the Board tonight is, is for your consideration, how the town might use those funds.
So we have two versions before you, one that we spoke about last week, which is, we've been advised by, by some folks that we could do as part of a home rule petition, and that would be an unrestricted version, so these funds would come to the town in an unrestricted manner. And that is something that we could pursue if we felt it was appropriate. And then there's another version before you with, in response to some of the questions and comments we've heard, that would actually restrict the funds to use of capital projects, so in, in, again, broad brush strokes, but capital projects, things that are, that would last greater than five years in, 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 in anticipated lifespan, things like that. So that's kind of what's before you, an unrestricted and a restricted version. We are, we've, you know, we've incorporated some, some details in there that weren't in, in the latest version, that weren't in the older version, things like requiring the, the Board of Assessors, and we ran this through with Erin prior to the meeting, but having the Board of Assessors certify the, the median assessed value by no later than, I think, March 15th. That gives them plenty of time to get that work done, and then we up here in this office, and you, the board members would certify what 80% of that number would be in a public meeting prior to April 15th, so it gives us a month to do that calculation. Hopefully, it doesn't take a month to calculate 80% of a number, but then we get that on a meeting and get that number certified as well. And that way, the public, we have time to, to publish that, that new exemption number for the coming fiscal year, well in advance of any, of any potential real estate transfers that would occur beginning on July 1st. So, so that's, that's, and again, broad strokes, that's kind of what we're talking about.
Can you walk us through what the approval process is, either by Select Board, Town Meeting, or the state legislature?
Sure, so what will be, and John is, John Coffin is here too, to jump in when I, when I get something wrong, but this will require a majority vote at Town Meeting, I believe, and then a, it will be required to be sent up to the state legislature as special legislation, and will be required to pass there prior to becoming law in Hingham. John, is that right?
Correct, majority vote at Town Meeting, and then passage by House and Senate, and signature by the governor.
That's right, the governors.
And am I correct that there is no requirement for a town ballot vote? It would just be Town Meeting?
That's correct.
Great. Okay, open this up for questions. Liz, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, great, thank you, Tom and Michelle. Just, just a clarification about the, the 80% of the median sale price, just so it's obvious to people. As, as Tom mentioned, that's reevaluated every year, recalculated every year. So if we do experience a downturn in the market, then obviously that, that number goes down. So I think that's important for people to understand, and then that exemption applies to, for everybody, so you're just paying on the amount over, over that dollar amount. I do like the, the version two, restricted to capital projects. I think that, that makes sense, and I know that was some feedback that came from residents, so certainly appreciate that. When we discussed this on the 17th, you know, I wanted to have some time for people to think about it and, and provide feedback. Two comments that I saw come in to the Board were. Two comments that I saw come in to the board were, one related to affordability, which I think we are trying to address with, one with the exemptions, um, but also, you know, putting a focus on the programs that are already in place to help our most vulnerable citizens and, and doing a, a good job um, at communicating those. I think that effort is, is already underway. Um, so I don't see this impacting affordable housing. Um, and I, I think that's a really important piece of this. Um, another comment was related to inheritance tax and houses that are, are potentially passed down through families. Um, which I don't think this impacts, but um, John Cofflin, if, if you have any comments on that, maybe just to clarify for people.
Yeah, this only applies to sales of property uh, by deed with consideration in the deed. So an inheritance through a probate proceeding would not trigger the tax.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I don't really have any other questions at this point. Certainly look, look forward to your feedback, Joe and, and Bill.
Great. Bill?
Yeah, a couple of points. Um, um, so obviously I, I, I think this is a, 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 a way that we are trying to advance initiatives to try to avoid uh, property tax increases in town. Um, uh, the exemption does allow us to um continue to maintain affordable options for people trying to come into our community. The exemption of the 80% or the, or the 560. Um, we'll continue to maintain affordability in our town. But uh, the issue really is that we have a lot of capital needs and I've always been that this should be uh, focused on capital projects and infrastructure needs. Things like affordable housing can be funded through this, uh, through this fee. But, you know, right now we're looking at, um, you know, a public safety building in the fall. I know this won't apply to that and foster school, but we have capital needs that we aren't even talking about right now. We're down, down the road, we're gonna have additional school building capital needs. We're gonna have a, a South Hingham fire station that has desperately going to have needs. We heard from Chief Murphy and and Deputy Levinson a couple of months ago about a roof that's leaking um, at that station. So that, that's not even on our, on our discussion radar. We, we already know that there are a lot of building needs in this town that this fee can help us address. So there's a lot that's gonna, there's a lot of benefit here to this, to this initiative. Um, I think it's, it's, it's good for us to have this discussion. It's good for us to, to advance um in a, in a proposal here to help avoid um, overrides in the future and to avoid continuous property taxes. So um, looking forward to moving this along and have a discussion at town meeting to, to um, see where people stand on it.
Great. Um, I've got a couple of questions. Um the first, I'm, I think I'm addressed to John, um, although Michelle or, or others may have a, an answer. Uh, so the median price, as I understand it, is the price so that half the sales are below that and half are above. Is that, is that your understanding? That's what, I think that's the definition, definition of median.
True, on the median, but it is the assessed value, the median.
I'm sorry, right, but it's, right. It's the assessed value such that half are below and half are above. I don't know how finely, um, uh, how the data pans out, but there are, there is room for ambiguity. And I'll just give you a really simple example. Um, suppose there are four sales. One for $100,000, then $200,000, $300,000, and $400,000. So the median is going to be somewhere between 200,000 and 300,000. Uh, 210,000 is a median. 250,000 is also a median. 290,000 is also a median. Do we need to include language that is more precise as to how the median is going to be determined?
I don't want to put Erin on the spot, but I know she's on it. And again, it's on the assessed value. Um, so usually the Board of Assessors would be the one crunching those numbers. Um, and I think this, the number of properties is in the several thousand um, range. So the median may be more granular.
Right, that, Erin, you understand the question I'm asking. There, there can be spread. Yeah.
And I, I guess typically what we would do is find the middle point and if there were two, we would average them.
You would take that, right. And that's, that's what I'd expect. There, there's nothing in the, in, in the proposal that addresses that that issue, but that, that would be the normal practice. Um, I, I don't think.
Joe, the way the legislation is written, the, the Board of Assessors has to make that calculation. And then they have to certify that to the select board.
Okay. Um, uh, second question is, are there any other towns in Massachusetts that currently have, in effect, this type of fee?
Not this same structure. Nantucket is the only one, I think, we discussed that has a similar fee, but that's for a designated purpose, conservation purpose.
And I think that's goes to a land bank. Um, and it's, it's, I think, structurally different than this. Uh, where I'm going with my question is, is, is there a model uh, that we should be following uh, that would enhance the chances of this being successful at the state legislature?
Yeah, I think this is modeled on the pending special acts that are filed presently with the general court and based on the general law that was proposed through the general court that's in a committee. But there is no existing law that's been passed and signed into law that we can use. So we're using other models with the understanding that we are on ahead on this and we would be the first ones to, to obtain approval if it went through the process.
Uh, great, because I, I've seen the proposals, um, that it were submitted to the legislature from Arlington, Somerville, Brookline. I think all those uh, target the funds specifically for affordable housing. Um, and um uh, I don't know what their chances are of success in legislature. And I do know that there is pending a, uh, a bill in the, for the state itself to be setting up a tran- giving towns the option to do a transfer fee, uh, where those funds collected would also go to affordable housing.
Joe, I was gonna add, Joe, I, I thought the city of Boston just passed something along these lines as well.
So they, right, so the, uh, the mayor there has, in fact, I, I don't know if it's a proposal or actually been implemented.
Okay.
And uh, but you're correct. I mean, it, there's something going, going, going through with the uh, city of Boston as well. I believe at this, at this point, it's a, uh, it's a proposed transfer fee. So um, if the pending state act moves forward, would our proposal conflict with what would otherwise be allowed under the, under the state law?
I don't think so. I think this is a special act under the Home Rule Amendment, so it would remain in, in effect for Hingham. The statewide statute is a local option statute that we would have to adopt. So uh, in that case, Hingham would technically have to decide if it wants to adopt another one on top of what we already have, but that would be a decision for another day.
Yep. Um, so I, I just, you know, a word of caution, I don't, I, I don't want to be doing things that will result in our residents facing twice the tax. Uh, one, one, uh, as a result of the state action and the, a second because of this action. But what I'm hearing is the state proposal is a local option.
That's correct.
Great. And I mean, this is clearly a, an alternative source of revenue that the town uh, needs. I think Bill has really uh, articulated the, the capital needs that the town faces uh, in the foreseeable future. Um, and uh, we really need to be looking for uh, funding sources so that we're not constantly uh, going to our residents for uh, for increased taxes. Um, so I think this is, this is a worthy um, option that we should be considering. Are there members of the public with comments or questions? Tom, do you know, has this been uh, sufficiently publicized that uh, residents who might have a concern about this have had an opportunity to get notice of, of this discussion?
While we've received comments from two residents, um, I would say that, you know, we've as much as we are capable of notifying the general public of our conversations, it's, you know, we had it in the open discussion two weeks ago. I think that's traditionally been our practice to, on something of import, we take it up one meeting and vote it the next.
So I will ask my fellow select board members whether or not uh, you'd like to act this evening on this or give residents more time to send in questions and we could act on Thursday. Any, any thoughts? I, I mean, Tom's right, we, we did have a prior discussion on this. It has been fully noticed. Uh, but I just want to make sure that, that we're all satisfied that the public has had adequate notice of this. Bill, any thoughts?
Yeah, so we've received at least, at least three emails that I can think of. I received obviously two recently and we received another one. About a week or two ago. Um, I know the, the task force discussed this in pretty good length too, so Liz, Liz can speak to any correspondence that the task force receives as well. Um, advisory is gonna take it up, I believe, discuss it maybe tonight and then maybe vote on it in the future. So there's gonna be notice there as well. I'm comfortable with it. Um, I have, I have, I know that I've received some phone calls from residents asking about it. I, I, I will say that there's, there, there is a lot of questions about how this works. Um, and you know, I'm constantly telling people that the, the fee is assessed on the buyer. And when people, when people hear that, they become a lot more comfortable with it. When they hear about the exemption and the percentage of the exemption, they be, they become a lot more comfortable with it. When I tell them that a lot of the, 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 the funds, it's our intention to use for infrastructure and to include within that intention affordable housing, they become a lot more comfortable with it. So the more we talk about it, the more people let, seem to warm up to the idea of this fee. It's, it's something new, right? It's something new. It's a, it's of tax. So a lot of questions are out there about it and I get it. But as I said earlier, you know, as policymakers um, in, in a town that is trying to create, you know, ways to try to avoid property tax increases um, at, at a time where, you know, things are tight financially for people. I am fully supportive of an idea or proposal to try to come up with that proposal to address some very, very needed capital needs in this, in this community without putting burdens on people's property taxes. So I, I'm okay voting to advance it tonight and I'd like to get Liz's thoughts on that.
Liz?
Yes, um, I do feel like there's been a, a good amount of notice, um, because we, we did also mention it during the task force updates. So it has been kind of, you know, circulating and we have had conversations with residents. Um, certainly appreciate the feedback. Um, one question that I did receive that I don't know if we've answered yet is if other South Shore communities are also exploring this or going down this path. Um, I'm not sure that we know that. Tom, do you, do you know?
John, you might have a better recollection of the list of towns that had been contemplating this than I do.
Yeah, I think Joe, I think Joe just listed them off a little while ago. I don't recall any on the South Shore.
No, I, I didn't see.
It's like Arlington, Concord, um.
Yeah, uh, Province Town had one. Um, there were a few different ones, but I don't think any on the South Shore that I can remember.
Okay, on the Cape, I think, but yeah, not, not necessarily our close neighbors. Um, so that, that's probably something just for us to, to consider talking um, with other communities. But um, I am, I am comfortable moving forward, Joe, if, if you think people are, um, you know, we've received a, a good amount of feedback.
Yeah, I, I, I think we have. Uh, I know I've, I've received um, comments and questions as well. Uh, one of the questions that did come up, and John, if you can briefly comment on this, uh, is a question about the if seniors are listed, are thinking about doing a reverse mortgage on their home, whether or not that, that transaction would trigger um, the payment of this transfer fee. And I believe the answer is it would not because there's an exemption for mortgage transactions. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the, the proposed legislation exempts all mortgage transactions, which would include reverse mortgages.
Great. Okay, um, I'm, I'm comfortable and uh, the vote would then advance this uh, to the advisory committee for their review and council.
Um, I mean, I, so before we do that, I know our discussion, Joe, I, I think I, so I, I, I would like to um have the, the funds go toward capital and infrastructure. I'm not sure where, where, are you, are you there? Or do you want it unrestricted or?
No, I, I think, I think that makes sense. So the, the version of Article GG that was recently sent during this meeting by uh, I'm not sure who sent it. Is, is it a John? Uh, Tom sent it. It is the version uh, that we're talking about. And so I think just, but I think it's, that's really important. Um, let me just make.
I want to make sure we're on the same page. Okay.
Yeah, that we are on the same page. Um, and that it is, um, let me just find it. Which section is it that has the uh, the use of the funds?
It's 2D, Joe.
So section 2D, which says, um, "All fees received hereunder would be deposited into a separate stabilization fund uh, to be established under uh, Chapter 40, Section 5B. And appropriations from this, that stabilization fund would only be used for those purposes specifically enumerated in Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7." And Section 7 is, is the typical list uh, for uh, capital projects. It does include things uh, beyond uh, capital projects, uh, for example, certain environmental uh, initiatives. Uh, but I think that is in fact an appropriate list for uh, these kinds of purposes. Uh, so that is in fact the motion uh, that if we were to go forward is, is the one that we would be moving forward with. It does have the exemptions. Uh, it's um, exempts uh, any real property interest, um, which is less than 80% of the median assessed value of all real property in the town. Um, and there's also uh, clearly an exemption for governmental transactions, uh, transfers uh, to the US, uh, the state or, or town of Hingham. Um, and specifically an exemption for transfers to a mortgagee and foreclosure. Um, and uh, there, there are a number of, of exemptions that, that we've talked about that I think are clearly uh, specified in this, um, in this action. And again, assuming that it moves forward and then assuming that it's approved at town meeting, it still does not take effect until the state legislature uh, approves it. And as we noted before, there are several towns that have had their own initiatives uh, that have been at the state legislature in some cases for several years and they have not moved forward. So there's no promise, there's no assurance that even if town meeting goes forward, uh, that this ultimately will be, become law.
So Joe, just one last quick question on that. Um, John, uh, when we were at our last meeting, we added to the warrant, the last version. Uh, so should the vote tonight incorporate an amendment to that version?
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
I didn't understand. Uh, go ahead, John.
So did they, at the last meeting, did they already vote to insert this specific article with specific language or where was it the last time?
Yeah, the last meeting, we took, with, the board took a vote to submit Article GG as it was contemplated at the time, which was not with the, these latest changes.
So I think what we should do is what we did, I think, last week on a similar item where we voted to amend the article. The article's already been submitted within the deadline, but we're amending it so that AdCom can take up the amended article as proposed.
Yeah, and just to be close, clear, this was a, and this was a late add. It wasn't submitted prior to death.
So we are talking about two votes, am I correct? One vote to um, to amend Article GG in the form attached here too. And the second one would be then to recommend favorable action of Article GG as amended.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Um, so we all have that and we should make sure that this, the version that we are about to vote on is included in the record uh, for this meeting. Uh, but at this point, I would accept a motion to amend. article GG in the form attached here too.
I will make a motion to amend warrant article GG regarding a real estate transfer fee in the form attached here to and to approve said warrant.
We'll do, that's, we'll do that first one. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Joe. Aye. Approved. Now we have the amended article GG before us and I would accept a motion to recommend favorable action on that article GG as amended.
I make a motion to recommend favorable action of article GG.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye. Approved. Article GG now moves on to the next step. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a discussion of the fiscal year 23 budget funding options. And, um, again, I'm going to turn it over to Dom who may turn it over to Michelle.
He's saying that that's an inside joke when he asked me early what I was going to say. I said, I'm going to say, Michelle, what do you have to share? But Michelle, if you want to bring that up on the screen, then I, I can walk through the first few slides and then she can do, Michelle will jump in as well. Okay, so, um, regarding the FY23 budget, uh, funding options, we have, uh, if you want to go to slide two, Michelle. We, um, we got some tough news, uh, late last week uh, regarding our ability to follow our plan for funding the budget this year, which was to use $2.1 million of stable, of the stabilization fund balance, the, the balance of our existing stabilization fund. We were going to accelerate the use of that fund and utilize all of it this year to balance our budget. Um, we got notice from the DOR, uh, we, the state, everybody in the state received notice at the same time. That they, uh, their newest guidance was that stabilization funds actually cannot be used in that way. So we needed to back out of that plan and re, reverse that, that, um, that intended use of the stabilization fund. So the week prior that we had anticipated our budget deficit setting at about $1.5 million. Understanding that there was, I don't, can't see my mouse, but, uh, understanding that there was a total of additional requests of about 1.744 million dollars. We had with a budget deficit at the time of 1.5 million. It could have been argued that we were considering, kept considering ourselves, um, balanced, uh, or at least balanceable, uh, depending on additional decisions to be made. Uh, however, with the reversal of the intention to be able to use in the ability to be able to use stabilization fund, we are now finding ourselves, uh, with a more recent, uh, deficit calculation of about 3.7 million dollars. Uh, that is, it's important to note that is all inclusive of all additional requests. Uh, as we have done throughout the process, we, that, that advisory committee will determine, um, the appropriate, uh, uh, application of additional requests. But, uh, as of now, um, with all of those additional requests in the calculation, we are looking at a budget deficit for, um, of 3.7 million dollars. Jumping ahead a slide. So we have three options to get ourselves out of this, uh, predicament. One is to reduce services, two is to enact a tax override and three is to, um, assign or utilize unassigned, um, excess unassigned fund balance. Um, you know, all of these can be used in and of themselves, each of them, or altogether. We could do some reductions, a small override and the rest fund balance if we wanted to. There's nuance and, uh, available to us in, in these options. So that said, jumping ahead again, we have some, just some background information for you. Michelle, if you want to walk through what the task force might have been thinking regarding overrides.
Right. This was a side and Liz, it's obviously, it's familiar to Liz as well. This was a side that we had referred to in our presentation on February 1st. When discussing the task force rationale for not doing an override in FY23, but instead looking forward to FY24. Um, so some of the considerations there, we're still, um, experiencing the COVID-19 pandemic and coping with the surge that just happened in the last few months. There are still significant federal funds available for use in FY23, primarily ARPA and ESAR funds. And I believe we're using the, to the tune of 1.7 or 1.8 million in our current forecast for FY23. We did talk about AdCom's resup, um, revised financial policy contemplating after using federal funds that are available, unassigned fund balance under emergency circumstances to protect and stabilize resources and operations. And to that extent, um, there is $12 million of excess unassigned fund balance available right now. Tom will talk through our proposed plan to use some of that fund balance, but that is theoretically available to apply to the FY23 budget if that's what the town decides to do. Um, we also talked a lot about in the task force, the school's strategic planning process and the staffing audits that are underway that should inform the operations, um, and needs over there. We also talked about the leadership changes in Hingham Public Schools, specifically the new superintendent that's coming on board, as well as a new school business manager that should be hired in the coming weeks. Um, and finally, we talked about not having enough time for the community to really discuss an override and consider options and implications for that. So it's something that we would look forward to preparing, um, for the, for the next fiscal year as opposed to the spring.
Jumping ahead to the next slide. So prior to this, um, new news of an additional $2.1 million being needed to to, um, to balance our budget. We, uh, we had done an assessment of our existing unassigned fund balance or excess unassigned fund balance. There's about $12 million, um, available, uh, right now, uh, in excess fund balance. We had anticipated using it in the way you see here, 2.2 million of it for fire capital. That's, uh, of a couple of roof repairs, um, some HVAC work and a new fire engine. Uh, it's also intended to, um, to remake the high school varsity tennis courts over at the high school. And then we were going to, I'm sorry, I didn't get noticed here. Um, and then we were, we had intended to use $7 million across the foster and public safety facility project, should they be approved in the fall. At a fall town meeting, we would use approximately $7 million to offset, um, the debt impact, um, from those two projects. Again, should they get, be approved. I would say that to the extent fund balances is, is, is a, is an option for, uh, filling this gap. I think that we should consider removing, uh, the amount needed to fill that gap from subtracting that amount from these two items, from the 4.7 and 2.3 million, uh, respectively. And those were allocated based on the percentage of the size of, the anticipated sizes of the projects. That's how those allocations were made. So, um, that would be my recommendation is if, if fund balance, in the extent fund balance is used, that we reduce these two, uh, those two numbers um, by an amount equal to what we are applying from fund balance for balancing the budget. Uh, and then the last slide I had for you, this is just a, uh, FYI more than anything else. Uh, it is related to, um, funding the budget as in so, in so much as it is the, uh, priorities, uh, I put forward for the, um, additional requests on the town side for the budget. There's just been a little bit of, um, I've been rethinking some of this and I think that I would prefer to have this order be the final, uh, the final priority order for additional funds or additional, uh, requests to the extent that, um, AdCom takes those up and they get pared down. I want AdCom to have these in this order. So what I've done is, uh, elections was, I believe, always number one. I think we had, um, the paramedic school tuition as the old number two. And, uh, and then, so I, I just, I've, I've reassigned them. So, you know, my top three now are really this pole pad, um, $2,000 pole pad or $48,000 for two thirds, uh, share of a sustainability coordinator. And then $40,000 for a part-time grant writer. Um, so those are my top three. And then, uh, these other two were just kind of shifted around. I do think that the public, uh, the paramedic school tuition, part of the thought process at the time we made this was, um, uh, that we wanted to be able to attract, uh, retain and, um, and attract new, um, new firefighters. And we're hopeful, uh, as we talked about it in, in place now with our new contract, that the new, the new, um, salary structure as well as some other changes that we've made. Hopefully a new public safety facility, et cetera, will, will actually help alleviate some of that stress um, uh, on the lack of, um, firefighters that we're seeing in terms of applicants. So I think that that might come to fruition. We're just not sure yet. So given that another year to play out is not a terrible, uh, idea. I'd left it high because it's still very important, but, um, I knocked it down a peg or two. So that's really the bulk of the changes. Anyway, um, so back up to maybe, uh, the two slides ago, three slides ago, Michelle. The over, the options to close the 23 budget gap. I think this is really where your conversation, uh, needs to be. Um, again, uh, there are three main options, reducing services, override or use of fund balance. Uh, at this point, I would recommend that the town consider, uh, the utilization of fund balance, um, as a, as a mechanism to close that gap with the understanding, as Michelle read, uh, all the reasons from the task forces, um, uh, the concept about not using an override this year, I think are all still valid. So, um, the idea that main, to me, the main one is that the school is still doing its work, its necessary work to evaluate the, um, the needs, uh, and we'll know more next year. So, um, I think that we should be utilizing fund balance this year with an understanding that there will be a more in-depth conversation about needs in terms of an override next year.
Um, Michelle, can you advance the, uh, slide? Uh, the next one. And then the next one. So Tom, just, just so I'm clear, am I correct that the, your bottom line has not changed? It's just been the order that you're presenting these fig, the?
That's exactly right. And I'm still requesting all of this technically right now. Uh, this is for AdCom to determine what should be funded.
Okay, that, so there's no change in the sum total of the request, just your, your, you've assigned different priority numbers.
That's exactly right.
Got it. Thanks. Liz? What's your, what are your thoughts?
Um, obviously this is disappointing news. Um, we were hopeful that, that we could use the stabilization fund and certainly that made sense to us. Um, the timing is, is uncanny. Um, so with all of that being said, um, I mean, I, I certainly don't feel like we're in a position to reduce services unless we absolutely have to. For me and the, and the work that the task force did, I, I do feel like the, um, the considerations and rationale for an override in FY24 still exist. I'm certainly open to having that conversation and, you know, thinking about counterpoints to that slide that Michelle showed, but you know, I think all of those, those do still exist and, and actually the, the stabilization fund isn't listed here. We, we didn't know, you know, one way or the other, if that could be used when we finish the report. Obviously it's, it's a risk to, to dip into the unassigned fund balance, but I, I do feel like since it's, there's $12 million over the 20%, it's within our town financial policy. It's certainly the feedback we've received from residents, the majority of residents is to use that. That they've already, they've paid those taxes. They've, they've, you know, paid that, paid that money to the town. And so, you know, I think a, as whatever we can do to be good stewards of that money and those resources i- is our responsibility. So I guess, you know, o- open to your feedback in terms of, you know, specifically counterpoints of this or if you see an opportunity to reduce services, it, it's hard for me to wrap my head around that right now.
Bill?
Thank you. Um, obviously I shared Liz's concerns about, you know, where we are with it, but I obviously I don't think we need to reduce services. We're not in that position. I'd be concerned about an override because it's so late in the process right now. We haven't socialized, socialized the idea. I think if you, if we were to put an override on the ballot, I'm sorry, on the warrant, it would just, it would concern taxpayers that it hasn't been discussed. It's, it's late in the process right now and I don't think we really need to do it. Uh, we have your 12 million, million in excess fund balance. We can take what we need from it and use it in a way to, um, to solve the problem here um, and not have to, um, force the issue of an override. I would note that we're going to be going in the fall for $150 million anticipated, $150 million debt exclusion. We're anticipating an almost definite override of some nature, uh, next spring. My concern would be if we went with option two here to have an override in the spring, uh, a massive debt exclusion in the fall and another override next spring. I, I think that would be too much for, uh, for taxpayers to shoulder. Um, where we have, uh, an easy fix here of just taking an excess fund balance amount and to solve, solve the problem that we have in front of us. So, um, I think that's the best solution. Um, I think that's the, the, the way we should proceed here. So I, I am, uh, supportive of, um, using the fund balance to get us through, uh, what we need to, uh, do to solve the problem here and, um, um, that's, so that's where I would support.
Uh, Michelle, could you advance the slide again? Next one. Uh, good. So the unassigned fund balance as of June 31 is the 12 million. Do you have, uh, any projection on the growth of the unassigned fun, fund balance, uh, as of June 31 of 2022?
Not at this time, Joe. It's, uh, it's, you know, while we have some insight into how revenues are coming in, it's, it's too early to predict where we'll end the year that way or with expenditures.
Every time I try, every time I try to answer that question and Sue Nickerson is anywhere near me, Joe, I get kicked under the table. It's, it's such an unknown process and you just never know what's going to happen year to year.
So without then projecting for next year, historically, has that figure grown each, each year?
Yes.
So I know we're not making projections, but if history is, is a, gives us a lesson here, it, it's likely to grow.
That there are, that, that, there will be, there will be turnbacks and, and the number will go up. Growth is relative, right? So it depends on how much you use in any given year.
Michelle, do you have, sorry, Michelle, do you have that chart of the, the growth over the last?
Yeah, I can pull that up. Let me find it real quick.
But that is one thing that we looked at with Sue Nickerson, um, as part of our process. I didn't have, I didn't ask Michelle to have this ready, so.
I mean, I, I think, Bill, a lot, you know, the points that you raise are, are really important. Consider. Just took that off. One second.
Sorry, Joe.
That's okay.
The chart, Liz?
Yes.
Yep. So that is showing, um, a pretty consistent rise. Certainly since, uh, 2008, 2009. But there are some years that it does not, uh, it's not go up.
Right. The town did a lot of work in these early years to recover from not just the recession, but from before. We've built up significant reserves. We've been over our, our threshold for the last few years, but we've proposed this plan to, um, to make good use of those reserves now.
Yep. Okay. Could you go back to the other slide presentation? Great. Um, so I look at how we were going to use fund balance. Um, and I'm concerned about making sure that the foster school project as well as the public safety facility move forward. And part of our plan was to use the excess fund balance to offset the tax impacts of those projects. And if we do, Tom, as your proposal, we take away from, from our ability to offset the tax impact by using those funds now. I, I don't know how that will affect, uh, residents' willingness to proceed with those projects. Uh, because before it, those, the direct impacts were significantly mitigated by the use of fund balance. And now we're saying there'll be less fund balance available, uh, for the, for those mitigation purposes. Uh, so I want to make sure that we're, um, I'm not sure pound wise, what's it, dollar wise, pound foolish or something like that, just to make sure that we're. we're not looking at at the short term and neglecting the longer term impact here. I think if we were to do a override for the upcoming town meeting, it would be significantly less. And then then what would be the override that would be proposed for the following year? And whether or not it's it'll be easier to 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 I'll make up numbers, two, $3 million overrides versus one, $7 million override. I I don't know. I'm not sure how that's going to play out. But I am concerned about the impact on being able to mitigate the foster and public safety facility impacts of those debt exclusions. I I think, though, that in terms of getting this socialized, we are late in the game, and it's unfortunate that we there's been basically a change in the regulatory view of how the stabilization funds could be used, and we need to deal with that. I'm hoping that if there is growth in the unassigned fund balance, that in fact, it will allow us to restore the those funds that would that we could then use to offset foster and the public safety facility debt impacts.
So George, yeah, so we did do a little bit of that analysis. You know, the four, seven, two, three, just for sake of argument, might drop, you know, to three and two, or three and three, five and two, or something to that effect, right? And when we applied that that money to a the first three years, as we had intended, that's the initial seven
Right.
to the debt to the debt impact, we were able to offset the we were still able to offset the tax impact in a in a way that allowed us to climb a hill so that there was less of an impact in the early years and to still cut off the 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 heightened the heightened impact above what will be the norms beginning in 2029. So we we didn't jump above the the 2029 figure with those graphs. Michelle, were you able to find those? Yeah. So this was the this one was the original one, right, Michelle?
Right. So this was our original proposal of 7 million, so 4 million and 26, 2 million and 27, and 1 million and 28. The blue bars show what the new debt service would look like after applying some of that fund balance to offset the impact to taxpayers. And then we
And the green bars are?
So the green bars is what we we projected for the total debt service for the five large capital projects. So this would be foster, the public safety facility, the pool, the warfalls, which are not moving forward this spring, and the senior center in a few years. And we were trying to lessen this burden, this impact here where there's such a large increase between 25 and 26.
Yep.
And so in the revised version that Tom's talking about, you'll see the change in the blue bars. It's not as dramatic of an impact, but it still is cutting off this peak here in 26, 27, and 28. And to your point, Joe, while we were hoping to to put forward a proposal this fall to set aside these funds, we still do have spring town meeting in 23, 24, and probably 25, if we're still going to borrow long term in 25, to set aside additional unassigned fund balance for this purpose if we so choose.
And also, if we are able to move forward with the real estate transfer fee, that that could have a real impact here as well.
Absolutely.
So I my my view is the the dynamics of the town aside, the fiscally prudent approach would be to see if we could do a town a an override for this upcoming town meeting. But I think, given the fact that I can't put the the pragmatics of the town aside, and that we do need time to socialize this, that there are a number of unknowns in terms of what what the excess fund balance will look like in subsequent years. It's to me, it's a close call, but I I think I share the view of Liz and Bill that now is not the time to do a an override. I think that will wind up putting additional pressure on AdCom as they review budgets to to not let the hole grow because we're not providing any additional recurring funding source. Using fund balance is not a recurring funding funding source. If we did have an override, that would be a recurring funding source. So in the absence of doing an override, I think there'll be a lot more work for AdCom in terms of making sure that we don't expand the the deficit based on our based on the town's actions. Again, I think it's a close call. But I think the pragmatics of the town suggest that we hold off on doing an override for this upcoming town meeting. My thoughts. Liz or Bill, any any reactions?
Yeah, I I agree with you. Obviously, it it creates a hole for next year, so we're not we're not solving anything for, you know, the long term. But I do, I have a hard time asking taxpayers for an override now when we have $12 million sitting in unassigned fund balance. It just doesn't feel like that's the best use of those funds. So I I just feel like we need to be strategic with those funds before we ask the residents to pay to pay more, and knowing that that tax grows and grows, right? That doesn't go away. So I although I know it it isn't, will be, we still have work ahead of us for for next year, for sure. I I don't feel comfortable with an override right now.
I mean, I I think, though, that using fund balance for operating budget purposes is is not a good way to go. And we we've got capital needs. Again, I think Bill has done a great job articulating those, and that's where we should be using the fund balance for. Not not to right-size an operating budget. But but I see the pragmatics of of making that that concession now, and it's quite frankly, what the select board did last year. But I think if we do not do an override in this upcoming town meeting, that the buck stops that. That that's it. We really do need to make sure that we can right-size the budget. That's where I'm coming out. Bill, any any further thoughts?
Yeah, well, I agree with with both of you. If we were to do it, I mean, I guess if if things were differently, and we were to do an override this spring and not need one next spring, my position would be differently. Again, I would be concerned about doing two overrides within 12 months of each other, plus, you know, $150 million debt exclusion. I think taxpayers would not would not look favorably upon that. And to put this so late, you know, on the warrant in in the cycle, I think it would be questioned about transparency. I mean, obviously, we're we're in this. We understand advisories in this. They're in this discussion. But people would be asking, well, where's this coming from? Why is this coming up so late in the process? Why now? Why did this happen late? So that's, I think that would be a concern for me to do it. And oh, by the way, you've got all this money in reserve, strategic reserve. You know, it's called free cash. You know, that's what they call it in Massachusetts. We call it fund balance, but it's there. Use it up. I mean, Joe, you make you do make a good point about, you know, if if you run the numbers, and what what's better for the taxpayer? To save it and to use it to mitigate the tax impact of the of the two capital projects? Or to do a smaller override and to use that money instead? I'm not sure what the answer is. It just makes the it does make sense to me to just say we have this deficit, use what we have now, that's going to replenish itself, and we get ready for the fall. Michelle, did Michelle, do you have any thoughts on Joe's point? Anything more to add on that? I mean, about what's the better course for 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 a taxpayer to to a smaller override now opposed to fund balance use? Or is it too hard to tell?
I mean, I ultimately defer to to you all, but I I agree with Liz's point, and we heard a lot of it in the in the Sustainable Budget Task Force, of people saying, you have all these reserves. Why are you coming to me right now when there is federal funds available? There is a lot of unassigned fund balance. I'd like to see the town, you know, use those resources before necessarily coming back to us. So I I think it makes sense in this case, too. I I agree with Tom's recommendation. And I think we would have some time. We we feel it's really important to set aside funds to offset the large tax increase from those capital projects. And I think that in the next few years we'll be able to add to to that as well.
And I would just just add one final point. You know, we haven't we haven't even had the discussion about the debt exclusion in the fall. We haven't even had the discussion about the override and how much that's going to be. And I'm sure, you know, my colleagues are getting this, too, and I'm already having a lot of residents talk to me about affordability.
Yep.
And a lot of residents are already talking to me about what this tax increase is going to mean for them. Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the report indicated, and Michelle as well, that was it 33% of the town lives on a budget of under $75,000? Did I did I read that correctly in the report?
That that is correct, Bill. It is slightly misleading because we can't we can't articulate people's assets. So we know a third of the town has fixed potentially on fixed income, but we don't know.
Okay. Number could be could vary. But then, I mean, I when I read the report, that did strike me as, wow, that's that is that's that's a tough budget to live on in this town. And we have a wide variety of incomes. You know, we have some individuals on the high, high end. We have individuals on $75,000 a year. So it's a lot. It's a wide variety. So I think we all need to consider that as we move forward with with our decisions over the next 12 months.
Definitely. And Michelle, maybe at the next meeting, we could just kind of model out what the tax impact would be with an override and the debt exclusion, so people could see kind of the average. Because to your point, Bill, if 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 we were confident that there an override wouldn't be needed in FY24, I would also feel differently about this year, but I I I just don't. I I think that the the school strategic planning process is obviously not yet complete, and so I just think it's premature to say this would be it if we did an override in in this year.
Yep. I I think when it comes time for the discussion about debt exclusions in the fall, we'll be getting questions about, well, what about next town meeting? What's what kind of override are you looking for there? And so it's it's I'm not sure how how to present that because the override that we will be discussing next fall, next, I'm sorry, next spring will be much larger than if we had a smaller override now. But I but I think again, if if we did not need the override the following year, I think we're all in agreement, it would be a relatively straightforward decision that we should move forward with an override now. But we don't have the facts to to make that assessment. And I I understand the concerns.
Could I just add one thing? To Bill's point, too, of of affordability, the task force did put forward a number of non-tax revenue options and recommendations that we may want to consider. I mean, we've we've put forward the real estate transfer fee as one of the most helpful ones, potentially, one of the the one that we think could generate the most revenue. But there are several other ones that the town may want to consider as other ways to provide tax relief, but still be able to provide the same level of services or increased services going forward.
Tom, anything else you wanted to add?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you, Joe.
Great. Art, anything that you wanted to add?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Great. I see Dave Anderson has now left the meeting. So I won't be asking.
Off to AdCom.
Yes. This this was helpful. So I think there's a consensus that at this stage, we would not be looking for an override recommendation for the upcoming town meeting. And we are also not looking for a cut in service. Good.
Great.
I am prepared then to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the COVID-19 update.
Great. Thank you, Joe. So the COVID-19 update for today, March 1, 2022, regarding some data points, the DPH, Department of Public Health is reporting that the seven-day average of confirmed 19 confirmed COVID-19 cases in the state of Massachusetts has declined substantially from 1,720 on February 14 to 704 on February 27. Statewide hospitalizations have also fallen from 902 to 445 in a similar timeframe. And the latest data in Hingham, the Hingham case count is also declining. DPH is reporting our 14-day daily incidence rate of 54 cases in Hingham through February 10, whereas on February 24, we are reporting a 14-day daily incidence rate of 27. So that's 54 down to 27. It is important to note that many residents are now, in fact, taking at-home home-based testing, which is often most often not reported and therefore not in these statistics. And as a result, we are assuming that the actual number of positive cases is, in fact, higher than these statistics show. Regarding vaccinations, the overall vaccination rate for Hingham is now 84%. Further, 49% of Hingham residents have received a booster dose. And according to the DPH, 79% of Hingham residents ages 5 to 11 are fully vaccinated. Regarding just very briefly, the temporary COVID-19 regional testing site that we had opened some time ago, I reported at the last meeting, and I'll just reiterate that that facility has, in fact, been closed. Regarding COVID-19 test kit distributions, the town of Hingham has received over 8,000 rapid antigen test kits from Plymouth County. We had conducted two successful distribution days, distributing nearly 1,100 tests to Hingham residents on February 13 and February 15. And we are reviewing other options actively for making remaining kits available to the community. Regarding some a vaccination clinic for pediatric pediatric vaccination clinic through the Hingham Public Schools, on March 5, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Hingham Public Schools will conduct a vaccination clinic at the Hingham Middle School, and that will be available for all Hingham students. The clinic will be run by the state and make available Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. So pre-registration is required. Tomorrow, HPS will provide clinic information and a link to parents and post this information on their website. So you should check the hinghamschools.org website for more information on the pediatric vaccination clinic. Regarding masking policies, so effective September 7, 2021, I instituted a MAC mask policy acting under chapters chapters 263 of the Acts of 2016. Under this policy, all individuals age 5 and over, regardless of vaccination status, are required to wear a mask covering to wear a mask covering the nose and mouth when indoors in non-school municipal facilities, with certain exceptions. On February 25, 2022, the federal CDC announced a new approach to COVID-19 prevention based on community level. The this color-coded approach escalates prevention measures based on community level. So Plymouth County is color-coded green, reflecting the lowest COVID-19 level. As this at at this level, key preventative steps include staying up to date with COVID-19 vaccines and getting tested if you have symptoms. Also, on February 25, the CDC announced that effective February 25, it is no longer required to wear masks on buses or vans operated by public or private school systems, including early care and education slash childcare programs. On February 28, the entire Hingham Public Schools District implemented a mask optional policy in its buildings and on its buses. On March 1, the MassDPH issued an updated advisory regarding face cover. The DPH now advises that a fully vaccinated person should wear a mask or face covering when indoors and not in your own home. and not in your own home, if you have a weakened immune system, or if you are at risk, at risk for severe severe disease because of your age or underlying medical conditions. Or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system and is at risk for severe disease or is unvaccinated. So I, along with our executive health officer and our COVID nineteen command group, continue to evaluate COVID nineteen data and trends. As you can see, those trends are certainly trending in a positive direction. Consistent with the discussions of this group, I I am currently planning to lift the mask mandate on non-school municipal buildings on March seventh. That's this coming Monday. Regarding some public health protocols, I'll reiterate some things we've been saying for a while now. Please continue to take precautions to protect yourself and others from COVID nineteen. As we all know, vaccination, wearing face coverings, practicing social distancing, and frequently washing hands, among other measures, will help to protect all of us from COVID nineteen. And I'll just state here that we have a lot of great data, a lot of restrictions are being lifted. You hear me perhaps being a little bit more cautious than than the the DPH and CDC by waiting an extra week and just evaluating some more data. But I think it's important that we recognize that this pandemic is in fact not over and that we we all continue to protect ourselves and others. On January seventh, the Hingham Board of Health, in fact, issued a health advisory strongly recommending the use of face coverings by all patrons, visitors, and employees within any indoor space open to the public in Hingham. The health advisory is directed to all visitors and employees within any indoor space in all public places, public housing, assisted living facilities, membership associations, and workplaces in Hingham. The CDC and the MassDPH Gardens on Face Coverings can be found on their respective websites. And the Board of Health, in fact, recommends the use of N ninety five and KN ninety five, or non-woven multiplied surgical masks when wearing masks. Woven cloth masks, gaiters, and bandanas, in fact, provide significantly less protection against the airborne respiratory virus. And also remember that any face covering should be fitted closely to one's skin to prevent unwanted gaps or leaks. That's all, Joe.
Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions. Thanks, Tom.
Tom, just one question. So when the town lifts the mask mandate, am I correct that the mask mandate will no longer be applicable to the library?
That's true. That's correct.
Although certainly can be posted that they would advise residents who who come in to to wear a mask, to wear a mask, but it's not a requirement.
Absolutely. There will still be masks available to the public when they come. There will be, as usual, hand sanitizer available. There'll be guidance regarding social distancing, et cetera. We'll likely keep the the plastic barriers, the sneeze guards, if you will, up at in most of our town facilities. You know, we do still have a lot of staff here that we want to make sure stays as protected as we can.
So I see no members of the public here, so I will not ask for public comment. I will go on to appointments. I believe we have no appointments for this evening. Next item would be public comment for items not on the agenda, but again, I see no members of the public. Although if anyone is listening and wanted to chime in, now is the chance. Moving on to town administrator and select board reports. Tom, starting with you.
Just to let everyone know that with the with the recent troubles in Russia and Ukraine, I want everyone in the town to know that we are your municipal government has been evaluating our vulnerabilities and any any places where we feel we can, we can improve our preparedness. We've been having those conversations in earnest. Myself, Michelle, and Art are guiding those conversations, and and I do believe and feel that our current staff is in fact helping to keep all of our resources as safe as possible. That goes for cybersecurity, as well as some of the physical infrastructure, like water and and sewer and electrical plants and and the like. So I just want to give everybody a reassurance that that, you know, to the extent we certainly, we can, we are on it.
Great, thank you. Michelle?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Arthur?
Thank you. I just want to say that I've been deeply immersed in the administrative aspects of supporting Tom in his town administrator role. And you'll you'll be hearing from me quite a bit in the coming weeks, I can assure you, but I have nothing specific to report tonight.
Thank you. Liz?
Just one update that the rec summer program registration opens tomorrow. There are some issues with the website. Apparently, it's a, it was a popular day across the country, but that registration will happen tomorrow.
I did see the email blast that went out on that, so that's great. Bill?
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
I also have nothing further to report, just commending all of all all of you here for a very fruitful meeting, a great discussion, an open discussion, and this is, this is the essence of town government. So so thank you. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Have a good night. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you.